Good morning. Want to call to order the Special Board meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for January 17, 2017. Want to thank my colleagues and certainly county staff and all those who've joined us this morning for being here. We have a fairly short order of business, but a very important one. And so before we get started, though, we want to do our roll call, do our announcements, and certainly the Pledge of Allegiance. So Flo, if you'll go ahead and call us into a quorum, please.
Good morning. Supervisors Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, January 20 at noon on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please take a moment to silence any electronic devices at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Flo. Would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this morning?
I pledge allegiance to the law. To the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation and God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Flo. All right, if you want to read into the record our first item.
Okay, for item number one, it's the proclamation of local state of emergency resulting from severe winter storms of January 2017.
Okay, and I'm going to call upon our county executive Nav Gill to offer some comments. And we have some presentations and obviously some background. Before I do that, though, I just want to thank all of those who've worked very diligently over the past couple of weeks, certainly in preparation for the storm events. And obviously, we have some more that are on the horizon, starting tomorrow and throughout the remainder of this week. But as we went into the storm, certainly through the storm period, and certainly as we came out of the first round, appreciate all the efforts, certainly the coverage by our local media that kept people alerted of traffic issues and certainly other things related to flooding to the storms. And so with that, I'm going to turn to Nav. You'll make up some comments. I think we have a PowerPoint. And here for my colleagues and others that are here this morning, and then we'll proceed to take the matter up for any action that's required.
Thank you. On the motion in front of you today is to ratify proclamation of local emergency that I signed on January 11. Steve can tell me, our chief of OES did advise me that it was getting to a point with the storm and the damage that we were incurring that was at that point to sign a proclamation so that we can get reimbursed from the state. And it does allow for a lot of our local businesses and other folks to come under that proclamation. And what we have is seven days from that day to sign. That's why we're here. I do have Steve ready to do a quick PowerPoint presentation that kind of shows you what the damage the storms had and what were the issues that we're facing with. So with that, Steve, can you?
Good morning, Board Chair and Board members.
Good morning, Steve.
Excuse me, I have a quick PowerPoint just to show you, try to give you a brief summary of what we incurred from the last storms. First of all, let me talk to you about the proclamation itself. The proclamation is under the CDAA requirements. Once the county proclaims a state of emergency, then it requires the board or the governing body to approve that within the next seven days. And then after that, it requires the board to also re-ratify or continue that ratification every 30 days thereafter. So events like this can sometimes take years. So usually, it ends up being a consent item on the calendar. I'm not anticipating this one being years, but you never know, and I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. So some of the benefits or the advantages of having declared under the proclamation under this is it provides financial assistance for cost recovery for the local governments, including the special districts and the RDs are also included in that. And it's for repair, restoration, or replacement of any of the infrastructure that they lost during that event. It also authorizes the promulgation of orders or regulations needed to protect life property. And it kind of loosens some of the restrictions that you have on your emergency purchasing and contracting. Generally speaking, we have to follow the policies of the board when it comes to making purchases or contracting, but this loosens it a little bit and gives some discretion to the county in terms of how they conduct that. The last part is it also provides DSW's workers with compensation, state workers' compensation, as well as immunity from liability for work performed during the disaster.
What's a DSW?
Disaster service worker.
So are people deputized? Because you have folks coming to the center that may be in transportation, in social services, so forth, so?
So it starts at the local government. Whenever a person is hired by local government, they are automatically sworn as a DSW worker. And so any of the county employees that were within the EOC or out in the field were already covered as a DSW worker. And it also allows anybody that's a volunteer or someone that's working in the field that has been duly sworn in, they are also covered under that. So I did not swear anybody in that was not already sworn in, so there was no need to swear any volunteers in for any actions they took in the flood fights.
Okay. Steve, and you don't have to feel too rushed here this morning, and this is the item of business, and certainly we want to go through it, you know, efficiently. But I do want to ask you a question, and ask, and state of board members, if you have questions, he goes along, jump right in. But on the proclamation, you said that this would require a 30-day renewal and could be for a lengthy period of time. The purpose of that is what? So that if there are claims that we wish to make as we go through and make repairs, because you can do estimates now, and that's what we're going to be asked to do later in your presentation today. But once the work is actually performed, for example, road repairs, you know, we've taken a beating throughout this county, and I'm sure, again, my colleagues and others can speak to that, and we're going to continue to see some of that fallout and disrepair as, you know, as we dry out and begin to actually get a chance to go out there and do repairs in the field. So what is the purpose, though, of the ongoing 30 days until you settle all the claims with the government, or is it for us to file claims?
It's actually until the damage has been mitigated. So in other words, like you mentioned, if you had a road that was eroded or a bridge that went down, then there's a period of time in which it's going to take the county to get that road or that bridge replaced or repaired. And so the other issue is that you oftentimes don't know what the damage is until you actually get into it.
Right.
So a lot of these things take a long time. There's other issues like historical buildings, that type of thing. Those can take a much longer time to restore. So it just gives the, it's a requirement by the state, but it gives the county time to figure out what those actual damages are and what it's going to take to repair them or replace them.
Thanks. Any other questions at this juncture? All right. No, continue.
Okay. One last thing. It also, under the proclamation, it also allows potentially for small business owners to get low-interest loans, too. So if they need to do any repairs on individuals' property, that they can get, take advantage of the small business loans through the government. So currently, we have flooded areas of parts of Wilton, Point Pleasant, and areas near the McCullough River and Grizzly and Snodgrass Slough. Those is really broader than that, but those are the primary places in which we have a lot of flooding going on. We have evacuation advisories only in Point Pleasant now. We did have them in Rio Linda and Wilton, and we've lifted those now. The road conditions, those are kind of spotty. We know we have roads that are closed still. There's a lot of smaller roads that we're not aware of, or we haven't had reported to us yet. But from the aerial observation that we've conducted with our helicopters, we know that there's more roads than the main ones in which we had mentioned before. In our website, I believe we have seven that are shown closed, but those are only the larger roads. On the rivers, Kusumniz was our first focus, and it had four places where it overtopped and several boils that we know of. The McCullough had one break and two boils. The sloughs, on Grizzly Slough, we experienced one levee break, and on Snodgrass Slough, we experienced several boils.
Steve, just for future reference, due to our spell check, the Kusumniz does not have an N. It's Kusumniz.
Okay. We know that.
Yeah, no, I know you do. Well, again, I just think it's important for folks to, when it gets put out there. So thanks.
Reclamation districts, these are only some of the ones that we're reporting on. There's others as well as these, but RD 1002, that's in the delta. We provided them with crews to help them with their levee prevention work during the storm. So they didn't experience any issues, but they had some weaknesses that they thought that they could strengthen, and so that's why we provided crews for them. RD 800, Wilton, that was the area that they experienced two boils, and they had a significant flood fight there. There was a lot of requests for rock, and there was some confusion as to what it is that they were actually needing. So we're hoping to meet with the engineer and have a longer discussion. I think we talked to Henry about four or five times during this event, and I think we just need to help him with the process so that he understands it better. And this is not, this is not an issue, or not really a negative thing for Henry. It's just something he doesn't do and doesn't understand necessarily how the state provides resources to these events.
Steve, let me ask you that, though, because, again, I've heard about that. I know I've been in contact with Nav. I know you've been in contact with some folks. I guess, I guess I'm curious as to why we haven't already met with folks. We're going to have storm events, a series of them. Again, I don't know that they're going to necessarily be as severe, but we don't know what is going to happen over the next five or six days. And I know I saw the written request that went into the EOC, and for as much preparation that we do, and I think we were well-prepared, that's very important, that we get that streamlined. And whoever points of contact are with, that can change over time, whether it's on our side of the house or on the other side. But when we're in the flood fight, and I don't need to tell you, you know this as well as anyone, and there's confusion out on the ground, you can have lost minutes, you can have lost hours, and that can, you know, result in situations, unfortunately, and fortunately, that didn't happen this time. But I think we need to make sure that's squared away. And as I've said to Nav, and I'll just say it here publicly, that it's important to have claiming so you can get reimbursed and so forth. But if you don't take the necessary action at the time, you can have a whole lot more, you know, remorse about what didn't occur and so forth. And so I just think we need to, and this is not unknown to us. It was in the same location that we had in 1997. And so I just, whatever, we need to work out with RD 800 and any other of the RDs or other agencies to the best of our ability. We can't get caught up on the paperwork piece of this and then have something more tragic happen that, you know, ends in either property damage. I think we were well-prepared when it came to evacuations and so forth. And so I want to get, I want to be positive about this, but that need, really needs to get ironed out, and I think we need to have that clear going forward, because this probably won't be the last time that we get, you know, heavy rains, and we've had plenty of experience in '86 and '97, and now, obviously, in 2017, to, I think, work those things out. And I thought, you know, people put together manuals after the last event, and who's going in contact, who's going to be in charge. A lot of that worked very well. But in the case, this case here, the rock did get in there, they got it in place. But we don't need to have that type of confusion out in the field. And I know we had people out there. That's the thing, is that, you know, so I'm probably more behind the story than we can talk about here today. But I just, we need to be sure that, and I would hope that in preparation for, you know, the storms this week, we have levees that are saturated, we have ground that's saturated, that we're well-prepared. And I will ask you a little later on about, at the bridge, what the assessment's been out there, so maybe you're going to cover that or not, but.
Yeah, we can certainly do better, but I will let you know that we have, we have a stakeholders conference call that we do prior to the event, and so all these agencies are invited to participate on that conference call. We also do drills and exercises with these people to explain to them the process and show them how it all works. So we have done some outreach with them and tried to make them understand, but in fairness to them, I understand that's not what they do for a living. They have other responsibilities, and they don't do it that often. So we can certainly make a better effort to get.
And when you're in a flood fight, you know, things are changing moment to moment in some cases. I mean, the water's coming up very quickly, you've got, you know, things on the ground that have to be attended to, and people making calls about material, about who's going to be in, you know, going to be sandbagging, and, you know, how you're deploying resources. Again, we were very helpful. I know we had sheriff's crews out there, and we, you know, had folks on the ground. It's just that fortunately, we were able to, you know, to hold it there. Certainly RD 800 was on the front lines, but I know we were helpful. I just, we need to have that streamlined, because that call for rock, you know, I've heard about that, so.
Okay. As long as you have a break here, Steve. I'd like through the rest of your presentation, I don't see a map in here, so next time you come, could you bring a map? Don represents that area, so he's probably the only one on the board who knows where Snodgrass Slough is, for instance.
Sure.
Not to make light of it, but it's kind of hard for the rest of us to understand exactly what those locations are.
We'll do that next time.
Thank you.
Point well taken, Sue.
So getting back to the reclamation districts, RD 800 was the one we were talking about just now with the two boils. They were right near Wilton Road and the bridge there in the Wilton area, just north of Dillard Road. Snodgrass Slough, again, that was experiencing one boil. That was one of our main concerns on this incident. They were having a hard time. They're still working on that boil as we speak, but they were, it was, they stabilized it, but there was still a lot of work to be done on that. On RD 0341, Sherman Island, they experienced three boils. Again, we were keeping an eye on that. They had a flood fight there. And then the confusing one for us was DR, what we think is DR 824 or MA 9, which is in the Beach Shores area. It's a reclamation district that's no longer in business, and so the state actually owns that piece of property. So there's a lot of confusion as to who had ownership, but we were able to track down the deed and determine it was the state. And they had a boil on the railroad track embankment. And the reason that was one of our bigger concerns is because even though we didn't, we thought it would be contained within the embankment and within the levees, the water does flow towards the town of Hood. So we were keeping a close eye on that one.
Can I ask you a question on that? Just on Main Street Area 9, which is the state, and they actually charged a fee to landowners in the area. What sort of resources did they bring to the table?
You know, Mike Peterson might be able to tell you more. I know they had an engineer there that night, but I'm not sure what they had more than.
Okay, well, maybe get to it after you sum it up. I'm just was curious, because, again, they bought that railway all the way down to Hood.
Right.
And there was some trestles there. I think one of those has been taken out, as you came through Beach Stone Lakes. But they have a responsibility, and they need to know what their responsibility is, because, again, if we're in the midst of it, and we're trying to figure that out on the ground, meanwhile, you've got, you know, properties in peril and so forth. It just seems to me that the state needs to know what properties that they own or responsible for.
Yeah, I agree. We did have county DWR was down there on that scene for most of the time until the state actually took it.
That's great.
So here are a few pictures. This is the Kusumniz River. They took this from, I think it was a CHP helicopter for us. So you're southeast looking across the South, Folsom South Canal towards Quince Road and Fig Road. And this is one of the historical areas of flooding. And here's another one, the Kusumniz near Deer Creek, looking across from Wilton Road. And then we have the McCullough and the Grizzly Slough. Those two issues are right next to each other, near New Hope Road, down on the southern end, right near the town of Thornton. So it's on the very southern end of the county. And here's a picture of the boil on Snodgrass Slough. It was a lot of vegetation, so it was very difficult to see it. When we were trying to share pictures with the state and with others, it was really hard for anybody to get any landmarks and figure out what exactly was going on there. Here's another problem they're having on Snodgrass Slough. They were sticking, using this excavator to try and find the leak on the water side of the levee. And then lastly, our EOC activation. We were activated between January 6 through the 17th, and we're still activated today. There were over 400 hours of OES staff time put in, and the number of people in the EOC range anywhere from three to 35 people per day, depending on the time of the incident. The county, we had a lot of people from the county. We had sheriff, general services, finance, DWR, DHA, the ag commissioner, PIO's EMD was represented, EMS, GIS, it's an alphabet for them, and OES as well. And then from the outside agencies, we had Metro Fire, Folsom Fire, CalOES, and CalFire. So before, I would like to make the recommendation that this board ratify the emergency proclamation. And then if you have any questions, I could take those.
Okay. Two of my colleagues here, questions?
I'd just say, I'd like to say, I thought our PIOs did a really nice job of keeping us informed about what was going on. I'm sure they were working with you, and that helped a lot to know the fight was going on some distance from where most of us were, but it was very helpful.
I agree. Everybody that came into the EOC just really did a great job.
Good.
Okay. Any questions here? Ms. Strun?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I have some general comments that I'd like to make after we take the vote.
Okay, all right. I did have a couple more questions. One is on the damage assessment. I've had a chance over the course of the last week to be out in different parts of the area, some of them that were still underwater out in the Point Pleasant area. Roads, again, I know this is not just to areas that had inundation, but certainly other areas in the county have taken a beating. When can we expect to have that damage assessment? Because it's not just filling potholes. I mean, there's base damage, there's obviously the assessment once water recedes, you know, around the Lambert Road structure, around the Wilton Road structure, bridges I'm talking about. And I just, that overall assessment, and again, you know, we're not going to get much sunshine here before the storm comes again. But who's in charge of doing that? Because I would just say, I don't think in '86 we did a very good job of claiming when the, you know, rural county roads became the interstates, and we ended up, you know, for years after, putting in, you know, many tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars in trying to repair roads that were never built to, you know, serve interstate traffic for three or four days at a time. In some cases, actually Interstate 5 was closed for a couple of weeks in '86, and then again in '97, we endured a bit of that, did a better job of claiming there. So Steve, my question to you, you and Nav, who is going to do that, and how are we going to get a good accounting and then know that that work gets done? Because, again, it's not just in the South County. I assume there's areas in the, throughout the geographical area of the county that once the waters recede and the sun comes out, we can get a chance to better assess that. And then, because I think it could be on the order of magnitude, you know, many hundreds of thousands, if not more, I don't know. But I mean, I, when I, I know what I saw on Friday and Saturday out there, and there's going to be the need for a good deal of repair.
I can't tell you what the total is right now on the initial damage assessment.
No, no, and I'm just saying, who's going to be responsible for doing that tally?
It'll be coordinated through me, but there'll be other players that are involved, too, especially finance is going to be heavily involved in that. But it'll be coordinated through my office.
So basically, what our process is, that Steve's right, that it's coordinated through him, finance, transportation, general services, whoever we need to plug in to get the damage assessment, we'll be working on this. Timeline, I think it's premature for us to give you one, but in 30 days, when we come back, or even sooner, we can let you know what we think the timeline's going to be.
And how do we know that the assessment, you know, if we, do we have to wait for the money to come before we can do the repairs? I mean, obviously, we'll do safety, you know, keep things passable and so forth, or what? How does that work?
Well, generally, the state reimburses us after we start our repairs. So it could come before, but not likely. It'll probably come after we start our own repairs.
Okay. Let me ask you about two other specifics, and relates to the Wilton Bridge. I know there was a concern, and I think we actually had folks out on Friday afternoon that there was a scour behind that bridge. Has that been assessed? Has action been taken that would protect that? Again, you know, the river has receded, but it's going to come up again, probably after the heights that it did a week ago, but.
The report I had on it was that they were aware of the scouring and that they were going to be sending out some teams out there to see if it needs repairs right away or if it's safe. My understanding is it's safe right now to be used, and so I'm not sure what the timeframe is for them to do the repairs, though. We're still working on the damage assessments for, today is our final day to get it into the state. So we're working on those initial ones, and as soon as we finish with that, then we'll start flipping over to the accurate numbers.
Okay. And my final question for this morning is, is that on the west side, again, I certainly, I know that our folks have been very active in working with both, you know, fire, rescue, and sheriff's personnel and public works personnel. But the whole discussion about Beach Stone Lakes, about the ability to flood fight on Lambert Road, it's been kicking around now since '97, '98. I know that we've talked with county council and certainly water resources. And we used to get regular reports about Beach Stone Lakes and the progress of any work out there. That kind of got dropped from our annual, in fact, we haven't had an annual report about kind of the winter rains, you know, this year yet, and we'll probably have a lot to tell. But I will say very publicly here today that we need to address that issue, and it's not just emergency operations. Certainly, I know that there's many moving parts to all that, but I believe in light of, now, three times since I've been with the county that we've had pretty serious flooding in that area. And we have, there's been, work that's been done that begins to impact then where water goes or stays. And, you know, some of that work was done out of county, some has been done by reclamation districts, it's been done by the state. And I just, you know, I don't want to continue to leave the folks in Point Pleasant, you know, in a situation where they don't have the same ability that others do when it comes to flood fighting. And we did issue encroachment to 1002, which I'm fine with, you know, all the things you outlined here, Steve. It's a serious issue, one, again, I won't be laborious this morning, get out ahead of disaster declaration, but it's one that I believe in the next few months needs to get addressed, and we need, you know, maybe even in the next week. I don't know what we're looking at as relates to that. But there is some ability to at least offer some level of protection before the water rises, crosses a road, and then comes in and floods those areas. And it may have some other impacts that we need to consider, but I do want us to, as a board and as a county, to have a policy position, at least a review of our policy position, what it's been in the past.
Supervisor Natoli, that is an item for us to do out of this event. We are going to be meeting with water resources, what options we have, and plan on being back to the board with some policy recommendations.
Okay. All right, thanks. All right. Do we have any speakers, Flo, on this item? Okay, good.
I have not received speaker cards.
All right, thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks for your hard work.
Yes. All right, so we have the matter before us to basically, I guess, affirm the proclamation or pretty proclamation of disaster, and then we'll see this back on our agenda on a regular basis for some time to come, I trust. So do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. All right, it's moved and seconded. Any other comments? If not, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Thanks to all. All right, we did, did you have any other comments, Mr.? Okay, Mr. Serna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I do want to express my thanks to Steve, his team, all of our executive staff, and certainly those that were actually out in the field last week during the storms. As was mentioned, Supervisor Natoli is much more familiar with what the circumstance was in terms of flood fight and other activities last week, because most of that activity was happening in the south part of the county in his district. But I know that all five of us certainly saw for ourselves different impacts from the severe weather. This is weather, inclement weather, that we haven't seen for a while. And one of the things that was very noticeable in District 1 was the fact that the rising waters, especially in the American River Parkway, were forcing those that have chosen to illegally camp there to be in other places that were much more obvious to my constituents, certainly to me. I want to issue a thanks, some very forceful thanks, to Paul Lake, our chief deputy in charge of county white services, and his staff, Ann Edwards, with the Department of Human Assistance, for responding very quickly to one of the circumstances that I was a witness to last week, which was a growing tent city along the crown of the levee on Long Garden Highway, just west of I-5. If my memory serves me correctly, we actually were able to initiate a pretty swift deployment of our social workers. We worked hand-in-hand with Sacramento Steps Forward Navigators and the Sacramento Police Department to have folks out there offering assistance to some folks that were enduring the cold and wet weather. I know we offered some motel vouchers, and some took advantage of that offer, and we were able to shelter some folks. So I know that they appreciate that. I certainly appreciate it. It's another reminder that when we have an emergent situation like this, it's not just a physical one in terms of the changing landscape and the high waters, it's got a very human toll as well. And I think it's a very bold reminder that this county has a responsibility not just to, you know, fight the floods and make sure that property is protected, but I think it also has the responsibility to offer service to those that are in most need. So again, thanks to everyone that was responsible for that. As has been noted already this morning, we are expecting even more wet weather as soon as tomorrow, I believe, or maybe even this evening. One of the things that I've asked our county executive, working with some of the people I've just mentioned, is to swiftly work with the City of Sacramento. I've been working with the mayor's office, Daryl Steinberg, to figure out a protocol, if you will, that we haven't really engaged in the past. And that is to make sure that we have available shelter, food, water, and everything that comes along with what people need during these circumstances. One of the things I've asked our staff to work on is to find some facilities, maybe some property for some kind of ability to shelter folks in the coming days. And, excuse me.
Is there water?
Yeah. So, I mean, trying to complete the thought here. I have employed what I did back in 2011. Some will recall that I felt the urgency deserved some immediate action to go find some funding at the time, to find added capacity in the network of our shelter system, working with our nonprofit partners here in Sacramento County. At that time, we were, I believe we were able to, Paul, you know, remind me, I think we were able to find about 25 additional beds at the Salvation Army. That was the result of some private fundraising. And I think this last week is another reminder, I think, that we have a responsibility to do what we can using the bully pulpit of our offices sometimes, and reaching out to the private sector, the nonprofit sector, to do everything we can to maximize capacity for shelter and other services required during wet weather and cold weather. So, again, working with Mayor Steinberg, who's been really leading a very aggressive campaign as of late to find shelter during inclement weather, I've been working closely with his office and his staff. And then reaching out to the Sacramento Association of Realtors, an association I know Sue is very close with, to ask their assistance. And that was really precipitated by a conversation I had with Eric Rasmussen, who is a representative for Sacramento Association of Realtors. They've been looking to really help local government on the front of sheltering homeless folks. And so their generosity has manifested itself in the form of a $50,000 contribution. The request was made of them based on the fact that using our administrative authority through our county executive's office, and likewise through the City of Sacramento manager's office, working with, again, the mayor, that we would match that. So we do have now available to us $100,000 immediately to figure out a solution, hopefully not measured in weeks, but measured in days. We're going to continue to have wet weather, cold weather, from now and through April. And so what I've asked the county executive to do, given that resource base, is to work swiftly with coordination through the city manager's office to figure out what we're going to do in terms of being able to do a better job of sheltering folks during wet weather. So that is something that my office will be continuing to work with our executive team on. I want to really thank the Sacramento Association of Realtors for stepping up the way they have. This is a pretty incredible contribution. The initial ask, quite frankly, was half that amount, and they offered to do twice what was asked. So I really want to thank the Sacramento Association of Realtors for recognizing the need in the community that their members work in, and they deserve a lot of credit here. So I wanted to kind of save this for the discussion on the 24th, since that is going to be dedicated to talking and discussing more the kind of collective and comprehensive resource base we have at the county for serving homeless. But again, given the urgency and the expected weather this week, I wanted to make note of that. And again, this is, quite frankly, my way of trying to really incite some bold action that's got to happen this week, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. Thank you, Phil. Sue, you have some comments?
Just wanted to piggyback on what you were saying, Phil. Also want to thank the Sacramento Association of Realtors, who always step up with more than you ask for, it seems like. So that was great. I wanted to acknowledge and just mention my community members in District Four during this last storm. There were, there was a collaboration between the faith-based community, the Lutherans, Catholic, Methodist, Latter Day Saints, Presbyterians, all came together with our winter shelter, our first winter shelter in Citrus Heights in Rio Linda. They opened a warming center to help out during the storm with some of their homeless. And I want to thank and acknowledge the veterans who stepped up when we needed cots. They called around to all the veteran stand-down committees in Placer County, who reached across political boundaries to say, yeah, we've got cots. And offered up 20 cots. We couldn't get to them because the water had, because of the storm, they were not able to pull the, I guess, the forklift in that could get the cots down. But the idea that the whole region is working together to help us out in our area, I want to thank everyone for that, and thank the veterans for stepping up to help out, and all of our faith-based communities. So when you put these things together, it takes people, you know? We're all out there working shifts in those shelters, and it takes a lot of people to pull together the food and the resources, and it takes resources that we can pull together. So I just wanted to acknowledge all those folks who helped out, and I know there's a storm coming, so we have more work to do.
Thank you, Sue, thanks. I would just like to now to maybe echo some of the comments too here about the inclement weather, and again, compliment, obviously, the folks that stepped up, you know, in some of the storm events the last few weeks, and cold weather and so forth, to offer relief to others, whether it be friends and neighbors or strangers. And I think that's really important, says a lot about, you know, the community generosity and willingness to help out. But as we've talked about this morning, we take the lead on many of these things, at least in trying to provide some framework of coordination and support. So with the efforts that Supervisor Curna, and obviously the Association of Realtors, sitting county, if there's an additional $100,000 that could...
And Supervisor Frost.
Supervisor Frost.
Yeah.
Yeah. For all those that have raised the money, to bring that together, then what is the plan? You have sufficient direction to be able to go out and to do that, working with folks on this board and others?
Yes, I believe I do, but if we run into any issues, we're going to be right back in front of you. But at this point, the request that I understand is that we can do that administratively, and the issues that we got to work through, I think we can handle that without, for the board direction. But just a caveat is that if I need board direction, I'll be back to the board.
All right. You can keep us updated via memo, I think it'd be helpful. Okay? Good, Sue.
Is the funding from SAR for the entire county, or is it specific to a certain area?
For the entire county. And this was really, Sue, again, inspired by some of the immediate action that Mayor Steinberg has initiated, namely the opening of their South Side Park Clubhouse facility for, as a warming center. You may have seen that in the media recently. And so he and I, and I know Patrick in his office as well, have been talking daily, quite frankly, over the weekend. I must have had a dozen conversations with both he and our county executive and others about ideas in terms of which facilities we might look at, which properties that are under the control of the county that we might look at to provide that shelter. Again, it wouldn't be shelter that's offered all the time. We'd have to, you know, explore quickly what we think the appropriate triggers are, whether it's so much expected measurable rain, or temperatures, or what have you. But the fact of the matter is, as you well know, we have too many of our constituents, homeless constituents, that are on the streets, and that's bad enough, but when it's cold and wet, it's heartbreaking. One of our social workers that I've invited, I'm going to be inviting to the 24th hearing, just to issue my thanks to her publicly, explained to me that during that effort last week along Garden Highway, they encountered a young lady that was in her third trimester that was suffering addiction and would not accept any assistance. And to me, that's completely unacceptable. We have to be doing everything that we can that's, you know, per our organizational chart, but more than that, as far as I'm concerned. And that's what, again, this effort represents, is trying to leave no stone unturned in terms of funding, in terms of ideas. I'm going to continue to exhaust that as best we can. I would encourage others to do the same.
That's great. Great.
And just for clarification, then, so next week's agenda, we have an item that relates to what?
So next week, what we plan to present to you is an update on the homeless work that we've been doing. In the fall, we brought a couple of items, and there's some deliverables we had in January. And one of them is a contract for emergency shelters. We want to come talk to you about what we, what our recommendations around that. We want to give you a timeline on the triage center that we introduced in the fall, where we're going with that concept. And there's five other items that are escaping me, but that's an update, and we're going to ask for some action on the homeless shelter, at least the contracts.
Okay, Sue.
Can I just put in one more comment on these winter shelters and warming centers are not always welcomed by the community? And in our community of Rio Linda, we have a group of individuals and a church that want to invest personal money into a winter shelter or warming center, food closet, transition. I don't know what it looks like, but we have a willing community there that may be able to take advantage of some resources. I know that there's a huge need in other areas, so I'm not saying ours over someone else's. I just wanted to put in a good word for Rio Linda, who welcomes, is welcoming that opportunity to invest, and with a little bit of help, might be able to do even more.
We'll keep that in mind.
I would just dovetail off of what Sue just mentioned, that, you know, again, this is to serve the county of Sacramento, all its cities therein. But I think one of the things that we will be considering is transportation. So if we have certain folks in one area of the county that are willing to accept an offer of emergency shelter during wet weather, there is the prospect that they may be transported to and from at different times of day. Those are all logistics that our staff are going to have to work on, but I think that should necessarily mean that we're going to look at places like Rio Linda, we're going to look at places in District Two, in South Sacramento, and in Susan Peters District. So as far as I'm concerned, we should be creative about how we're going to do this. We have something to work with now. I think if we're going to come back in a week or two and nothing's happened, shame on us. So I am putting the onus on this county and our executive team to figure this out.
Don't we already have a warming center at the EOC and transport by way of public? I mean, do we have that warming center open, or?
I don't believe we have a warming center at the EOC, but we do have an active winter sanctuary program that's housing 100 people every night. We have various emergency shelters that obviously are full to capacity. There's additional need. I know the city has opened one of its facilities, so there's a lot, a lot going on out there. I don't think there's anything specifically at the EOC, though. I defer to Steve on that.
I don't believe so.
Okay, I'm probably getting the acronyms wrong. There's, we do have a warming center that we, through the county.
Yeah, it's the winter shelter.
The winter shelter, yeah.
Same thing, but a different name.
Okay, sorry.
I think you may be referring to when the weather reaches a certain threshold, we open up warming centers.
Yes, yes.
And we typically partner with the City of Sacramento to do that, because we have a larger concentration of the homeless down there. So that's what we've done in the past. We do not currently have one open, though.
Just one other thing, if I could, then, just when you come back next week, I know we're talking about emergency shelter and so forth, but I think one of the things that was very glaring in the report that was shared with me, that when they went out to the tent and campment on Garden Highway a week and a half ago, and made contact, that, you know, there was probably a fifth of the folks, or maybe a little less, that took advantage of the vouchering, which gave them some, you know, shelter for the night or for a few days. But many of them basically rejected the offer, and the case that was cited by Supervisor Curna, the addiction, methamphetamine, opiates, heroin. And I think that if, in fact, you know, I've just got a grasp on people's lives, and you, you know, they may make a choice, even in whatever state of mind they are, to say no to, you know, to an offer for help, I think it goes back to the discussion we had this time last year, and we put some additional money in for drug and alcohol services. But if, you know, we talk about chronic homelessness, what we're going to do with emergency shelters, what we're going to do immediately to provide some shelter for folks during inclement weather, I would just say that over the course of the next couple of weeks, as we have this discussion both in these chambers on 24th, and then subsequent with our colleagues, it will most likely come up in some context, you know, the following week with the joint city council board supervisors meeting. I think now that needs to be a key part of it, because we rely so heavily on state dollars, we, you know, we've signed out realignment dollars for other purposes. But if, in fact, beyond the immediacy of the issue, we're going to address this, I believe we've got to have that conversation, because with Prop 47 and with other changes in the law, folks don't even, you know, not that jail wasn't a proper place, but at least they had a chance to dry out, maybe had a chance to think about the circumstances. They remain on the streets, they make the choices, they're in our communities, and I think maybe with under right set of circumstances, some of them would obtain help, but it has to be immediate. It can't be, well, we'll see, we'll put you on a waiting list in 60 days. That's not going to work. And so I know that Dr. Heller and others have reported this in these chambers about where we are for entry into programs, but beyond that, some immediacy, to the point about shelter immediately, I think that if we're, if you get somebody's attention and you get their willingness at that moment in time, you got to grasp it and run with it, otherwise you may not ever get that again, and they're going to continue to be, you know, in a situation that's a problem to themselves, but also to others in the community, and puts themselves in jeopardy as well. So I would just say that that needs to be a part of our conversation. This is, has multi faces to it, but that's one of them that certainly was evident to me, and I'm sure our social workers could recite that very clearly as to, you know, the reasons why people turn down help.
Mr. Chair, just one last thing I want to mention is that, at the time that both the mayor and I were thinking about how to do this quick and mini fundraising effort, as well as going to our respective executives for their ideas and assistance about matching the funding, I had asked Paul Lake and his staff to make the rounds with the network of our nonprofit shelter community, to see if they have any capacity. And the report back that I received is that they're all at capacity. There may be a couple of beds available or room for cots at one particular shelter, but it's a handful. So we're trying to, again, look at every opportunity, including any opportunity to enhance the motel voucher program. That was what was offered last week. And so I think, again, we have to consider this as much a part of a quote-unquote "emergency" as a flood fight.
All right. Conversation to be continued, certainly the efforts continue, and again, thank you for the work that brought us here this morning. And again, we expect to hear back on the matter before us, as well as obviously the issue of homelessness and sheltering as soon as next week. So with that, is there anything else coming before the body? Ben Clark? Okay? Anyone else to speak? Okay, with that, we will adjourn and return here a week from now. Thank you.